This conference will now be recorded.
We'll go ahead and let the record reflect that we have all board members are present via camera. Ms. Torres, Tinkbell, Jay Leonard are in the Ashford dais. And we will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Kellis.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn on my volume here. Thank you. This is a pretty exciting evening as we've been preparing for several months as this really kind of started back in January with a discussion with the governing board. And based on that direction, administration has done some preliminary planning. The intent of this evening is to share with the governing board of our plan, how we're going to come up with a plan. And Mr. Dean is going to share how we're going to go about developing a plan to have middle schools in Dyser. This is exciting because it has been probably more than 20, 25 years since Dyser has had a middle school. The original one was where the current Dyser Elementary School is, and that was Dyser Middle School. As we look around the West Valley, we see that pretty much we're the only kid on the block that doesn't have a middle school. We look at the other options of school choice, and they all have a middle school. That's one factor, but there's also, I can't tell you how many times parents or staff or administrators or even I had somebody from out of town who said, "When is Dyser going to get a middle school or have middle schools?" There's a lot of disbelief that we don't already have them. I think there's some interest beyond just superficially researching that. I think there's some good research-based rationale to offer middle schools and to look at the benefits that can come from those. So we'll be talking about middle schools and the plan of how we're going to develop the plan. And then after that, after Jim presents that, I will share some information about high school visioning and some very, very preliminary outlines that some high schools come together and develop, and that will kind of allow the board to look inside the head, the brains of what's going on as we're talking about high school visioning. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Dean.
Good evening, and thank you.
I can't hear Mr. Dean. Wait, you're all on red. Do I have to unclick you guys? No, you have to unclick yourself.
Yep, I'm good. Can you hear me?
There you go.
All right, good. Well, thanks for a few minutes this evening to talk to you about the plan for the plan to establish middle schools in the Dyser Unified School District. And this would be to start middle school process for the 21-22 school year. With that, Louisa has some slides that she's going to put on the screen, and we'll go through just a quick presentation this evening. Can you see them?
No.
Can you see them now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So again, there will be some details that will be, that are intentionally missing from this presentation because this is, again, the plan for the plan. And those very minute details will be added as we go forward. And Louisa, can you go to the next slide, please? So to begin the process, we will be looking to hold virtual town halls. We originally had planned to have just in-person town halls, but we will have virtual town halls announcing our plan to move towards a middle school model in some of our schools. And those will be scheduled for April and May of 2020. Some of the pieces that will be discussed in that virtual, in the virtual town halls will be grade configurations, thoughts on whether we're looking at a 5'8" model, a 6'8" model, a 7'8" model. Additionally, we would like to gather input on the structure of middle school and provide some information related to what homeroom advisory periods look like for middle school, honors tracks that could be possibly used in middle school, and some potential electives as well. Next slide, please. Phase two of our plan then would move to June through September of this year, and that would be to create a middle school planning team. And that team's responsibility would be to begin to conduct research on successful middle school models. That research would be both virtually, as we look actually at research and data related to successful middle schools, and hopefully would contain the opportunity to visit some of the best middle schools in the Phoenix area. There are many around us that are doing an excellent job, and we'd like to be able to visit and see what it is that they're doing successfully and begin to create a model of what our middle schools would look like. Next slide, please. Phase three then would be approximately October of 2020, and that would be to take all the information that we've gained and to identify our grade level configurations and possible locations. We certainly would do that with research, based upon research and the community input that we received. We would review the demographic reports related to what we're looking at for enrollment projections. That would lead into phase four, where we would actually formally identify our school locations and grade level splits. We would determine our optimum locations and the administrators that would be best suited for both the middle school opportunity and the primary school opportunity, as well as identify our schools to continue within our successful K8 model. Just a note to the board that as we begin to formalize that process in October, that will come with boundary changes as well. Because as we create middle schools, we'll have to talk about what those boundary pieces look like as we move forward. Next slide, please. Phase five then would be October and November, and that would be informational forums to notify our community and staff about the middle school transition, followed or in concert with letters to our community with the transition and how it will be impactful to each community. And then phase six would be then to finalize the middle school staff structure. So as we get into looking at what the homeroom or advisory structure would look like, if there's going to be an honors component, what the electives will be, you know, if we're looking at a house concept for middle schools, that will identify what the middle school staff structure would look like. Next slide, please. Finally, phase seven would be from November of 2020 through July of 2021 to provide professional development for our administrators in successful middle school culture, to provide professional development for identified staff in middle school pedagogy. And then throughout the school year in 21-22 and years beyond, the CNI department will provide ongoing support with instructional approach for middle schools. Additionally, we'd be looking at creating a middle school advisory group that would be made up of various stakeholders in the district to continue to monitor and make recommendations regarding both the plan and its implementation as well. And so that's the plan for the plan for bringing middle schools to the district starting in August of 2021.
So as you heard here, there are no details. All the details have to be worked out and identified. This is just administration's plan to how we're going to proceed forward in identifying all of those details. There's a lot of people who right now want to know, "Will my school be a middle school?" Or, "Where will students go? What will be offered?" All of that is part of what needs to be planned and developed over the next year. But what questions can we answer for the board?
Can you go back to phase four for just a quick second?
Do we have any questions from the board?
Okay, yes. Have we approached any? I know that you have received some information from some community members, why don't we have a middle school? Or a couple of middle schools? Have you received any that are just not on board with us?
You know, there have not been any just because we have not gone public with this until just this evening. There have been some discuss, well, when we announced the study session and the board approved having the study session for the purpose of discussing middle schools. But prior to that, it wasn't a topic of discussion. The district was pursuing this as an idea. And so there were no public comments saying, "I hope you never intend to have a middle school." I never received anything like that. I'll share that as a former middle school principal in the Deer Valley District, and Deer Valley had two different formats. They had K8 schools and middle schools. And there were some parents who were very, very adamant that their student was not going to be in a K8. They felt like with the learners and eighth graders, that they should not be on the same campus, that the middle school students were too mature to be as kindergarten students. There were other parents who were very adamant that they felt like a middle school was too mature for their child, and they felt like they needed something a little more, I don't know what the right word is, but less grown up than being, than their kid being in a middle school. They didn't want them to be associated with almost high school kids just yet. So there were options. And it wasn't that anybody was all for or all against, they had a choice. And so there wasn't any issue with parents feeling like they were stuck in a middle school or in a K8 because they could, if they didn't want one, they could have the other, and it was just as available.
Somebody didn't hear my questions, and then, but can you hear me now? Maybe?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, I can, I can hear you, but you're echoing, so I don't know if maybe you guys are too close. So it's garbled. Mr. Dean repeated it for you. I didn't hear that.
Can you hear me now?
No, it's good. Yeah.
Okay, so my question to Dr. Kellis was, even though we've had folks that have expressed interest, were there people that expressed they did not want to go with the middle school model for Dyser? That was just my question, and then he went in and answered it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would add also, just here briefly, if you want to post a question in the chat box as Ms. Pritchard and Mr. Leonard have done, we can all see those questions as well.
An odd, because I was on a webinar earlier, and I didn't have this much problem, so, thank you, Dr. Kellis.
So I think, just to let you know where administration is headed at this point, you saw Mr. Dean share the timeline. We will start moving forward with this. This is definitely going to be generating some attention as we start pushing out into the community to solicit input, which is that first phase. It is absolutely expected that the media will pick up on this. I anticipate that for, by and large, we're going to get a lot of positive attention for what we're doing. And I just want to thank the governing board for your vision of this, and we want to keep the board informed, and so we'll be providing updates along the way.
I think just knowing that the community is going to have some input through these virtual forums, I think that's going to be really helpful. So even if there's some fears out there as far as, "What does this mean for my child?", they're going to know they're a part of the process and have a voice, and I think that's going to really make a difference. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely, and because this is going to be affecting pretty much every child in the district, it is important that the public know well in advance and that they have opportunity to share their feelings about it. We want it to be an extraordinary experience for every student in the district. And if there's a family that has particular needs or interests that are not in alignment with where we're headed, then we would want to look at how those needs and interests can be met.
Can we have the boundary discussion in January? When I'm gone? Just asking, thought I'd throw it out there.
Will the timeline be available to the public?
The question was, "Will the timeline be made public?" The question was, "Will the timeline be made public?", and yes, I'm anticipating that Mr. Dean will have a frequently asked questions page with a webpage dedicated to keeping the public informed. One thing we've learned through the last couple of weeks is the absolute critical need for good communication and making sure that everybody's informed every step of the way. So that's something that will be very important.
The other thing to note as well is that, yes, we'll certainly publish the timeline, but we also want to make sure that we ask the media to be good partners with us in communicating to our community opportunities for input and the timeline that we're looking at leading up to a 2021 start.
So at the present time, what do you need from us? What do you need from us?
We have a very nicely connected network to the families of the district. And we would ask that the members of the board please share with us if you hear things that we're not attuned to. We want to know what the thoughts and feelings of our community are. And if there's a sense that the public is not feeling included or informed, that's very important. Or if they have particular concerns or fear, wants to know just how to be involved, we would ask that you be an extra set of ears for us. Also, I think it's great for the board to advocate for the initiative that's coming forward and that it will help our community feel much more confident as we approach the start date of middle schools if they sense that there's excitement and positive vibe from the governing board.
Any other questions?
I'm excited about it.
I don't think we can hear you, Dawn. You may need to type it into the chat. Sorry.
So her question is, "How many K8 schools are we expecting to keep as-is?" Again, that's one of those details that need to be hashed out as we get community input and identify what the need or the demand is. It will also depend somewhat on facilities and access to facilities. If we, for example, start looking at creating middle schools and primary schools that are paired, and there may be an odd school out there that geographically isn't close to any other school to pair up with. And it may be that it's just by nature of geography that a K8 is formed versus a middle or primary school. But those are very critical pieces of community input and part of the plan that Mr. Dean will be implementing to identify how many which ones. And even as we start looking at, I've asked, "Are you changing the names of schools? What about the signature programs? How about staff? Are they going to change sites? Who's going to be the principal of which schools?" Tons of questions that are all absolutely vital and relevant questions that will be determined.
Any other? All right, yeah, if anybody has a question, now's the chance. Wave your hands, touch your ears, touch your face like you're not supposed to. Going once? Going twice? All right.
So at this point, I'll go ahead and share what's happening with high school visioning. And just for your information, I'm reading off of this page. These are just some notes that we have taken. It's not a formal document. It's just some discussion notes. So the high school visioning, why are we looking at high school visioning? As we consider the trend or the, actually, probably the lack of trend of our high schools, it's time that we get serious about ramping up the quality, the standard, raise the bar for our high schools. Am I comfortable that three of our four high schools have yet to be an A? And there is absolutely no reason why any of our high schools is not an A school. It's not just the academics, as we look across the board at all the different aspects. There is choice in our community now. And as we consider, why would a family choose to come to a Dyser High School versus another high school? It's important to look at what are the needs of our community? What is it that students need in their student experience and their student high school experience to be able to achieve their lifelong goals? We have done an excellent job of getting our kids to the high school. I think, to be honest, I think our kids do have an extraordinary high school experience. But can they compete with their peers across the state? Can they compete with their peers in the East Valley? What about across the country? As students are competing for college enrollments, can they, can they hold their own? And what's the value add of their high school experience here? I'm concerned that we have not had more national merit scholars come out of our high schools. There are some high schools that typically have two or three per year. And we're, we celebrate when we have one in the district over the course of a couple or three years. So for all these reasons, I feel plateaued and that there's an opportunity now to raise the bar and to look at really revisioning the high school experience. I've had meetings with cabinet. Cabinet has had meetings with high school-related leadership, including all the high school principals and district office, folks who are associated with high schools. And as we have carried on this conversation, there is 100% buy-in to looking to the future and doing something different. We just can't, cannot keep doing the same thing that we have been doing. So the vision of looking forward is to establish destination high schools built around the student experience. So that student experience, there are, just like Mr. Dean was talking about with middle schools, there are excellent examples, not only here in the valley, but across the country, where they have nailed it. They got it right, they figured it out, and those students are having just an exceptional student experience, not only in their day-to-day life as a high school student, but in how it's preparing them for post-high school. So some of the things that we started asking questions about, well, what does, what does it look like? What would a different high school look like? And we, as that group, that high school visioning group started diving into it, we had to kind of hit the brakes because there were, the discussion was starting to lead towards, "Well, we should have a zero-period class, we should have an eighth-period class, we should have no bells." Those are all are too soon to say, "This is what we need", when we haven't even started doing the research yet to see what is the best model that's out there. It's possible, after we do the research and we evaluate the most productive, effective schools, high schools in the country, that we stand back and say, "You know what? The model we have is the best model, and we keep doing what we're doing." But I'm hoping that as we look beyond our own borders, that we can identify effective models and bring some of those structures to our Dyser High Schools. It could include expanded grade configurations, open scheduling. It could be thematic programming. You could have, maybe a student has a minor or a major area focused on their studies. But the objective of the group is to, right now, follow the design process. If you're familiar with the design process, it's a six-step strategic method for implementing change. And I'll just explain those very quickly. The first one is empathy. In other words, it's understanding what are our community's needs? What is the, should the student experience be like? You identify those aspects through focus groups, surveys, through one-on-one conversations, through school visits. So that's just kind of getting your hands around what are the needs. Second is to, is called define. It's putting a framework around the information that you have collected. So you combine and you review all of the research that was collected during the empathy stage. Next, ideate. In other words, you start putting together a blueprint. You brainstorm ideas and start generating creative solutions based on your understanding of all the research that you've collected. After you have developed a very preliminary blueprint, then you start putting pieces in place for a prototype. A prototype is basically a sample of what it might look like. It's not the final, it's just a draft model that could as a pilot, but it's intended not to be the final product. It's a prototype, which is intended to be tested, to be tried, to be broken. If there are pieces that need to be switched out, it's not full-scale implementation. It's very small scale and strategically implemented in a way to gather And then after the prototyping and the testing, then comes the implementation. And that implementation stage could be an actual pilot where And that implementation stage could be an actual pilot where it is put in place. Doesn't have to be the entire high school. It could just be for the freshman. It could just be for certain classes of the freshman year, but it's the start. It's where we say, we have launched this new visioning plan. And it could be a four-year implementation plan where each year, different aspects are put into place. The final step is the evaluate where we look at that pilot or that implementation. And we repeat the process over again where we start, I say, start with the empathy stage and identifying, is this student experience what we intended it to be? Is our understanding of the needs accurate and is the plan achieving those needs? So we we got to a point where the group, this, when I say the group, I'm talking about our high school leadership group. Felt like we did not want to go any further without bringing the board online and letting you know what we're up to, that we're having these conversations. These are conversations that if made public at this point, and now they are public. But if they were prematurely made public, it would be unfair to the governing board to be confronted with questions that you didn't even know were being had about. And so for this purpose, we wanted to share with you and to just get your, your thoughts. If you have any, any large-scale visioning feedback to give. In other words, this is the ends part of the board leadership. As we look at high schools, we would appreciate your, your guidance and your vision and developing that ends component before we go too much further. That's the purpose of this evening is to, to bring it to, to get your input. It doesn't mean that if you just now heard about it, that you have to have all your ideas compiled into us during this meeting. We welcome ongoing feedback. If over the next couple of weeks, your, your mind is racing and you come up with some thoughts or questions, we would welcome those at any time. But we're ready to start moving forward. As far as a timeline, this is not a quick timeline. This is a very slow and a very thoughtful process that we anticipate taking three years to really make sure that as we do our, our six stages of the design process, that we are very diligent in making sure that we don't just willy-nilly start trying things and then abandoning things. That would be very frustrating to our community, to our staff. And it would just be another month type of scenario that would make it difficult to implement any change. As far as involvement, we have not even gotten to the point of planning the plan. But we do want to, to move forward with, with the board's blessing. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
I have a question.
Quick question, Dr. Kellis. Who's first? Um, real quick, you said that other high schools around, you've seen other high schools around Arizona that have nailed it, that they are doing an awesome job at, at this. And I guess I would just like to know, like, what do you see that they're doing that we aren't experiencing in DICERt? And I guess, like, I guess I'm questioning, like, when you talk about this process, I mean, maybe I just don't have a clear vision of it. What's the difference between that and like what we're already doing when we have like our advisory groups and things like that?
Great question. So what's, what's wrong with what we're doing maybe, or what is it that other people are doing that we're not? Good, good question. We, I believe, have a very traditional model. We have a bell schedule. We have six classes a day with a lunch. We have, every class is about 55 minutes. The, the routine is, is very much the same every day. Some schools, we have, we've kind of tinkered with some improvement or extension or where, where students can take a half hour and get extra supports. Some high schools have, have kind of tinkered with that. In, in the past, we have had it. It's gone away because it wasn't, the time wasn't being used as effectively as teachers felt like it valued the time away from instruction. So with that traditional model, there are other high schools that, and again, I'm not saying that these are the solutions. I'm just saying, what are other high schools who, who have nailed it doing? I was at a high school in Omaha, Nebraska, Mrs. Tanner, where they had a, an auditorium with probably 250, 300 students in there from a teacher. What that allowed is that while those 300 students were in that auditorium, there are teachers outside of the auditorium in different classrooms or different conference rooms, working with four to six students at a time. It could have been that those students were working on special projects. It could have been they were getting tutoring, but it was for an entire period. It wasn't just for a 20-minute intervention time. There were some classes that were offered that, like in the digital arts, where there are only 10 kids that had signed up, but they were able to do high, high-level digital artwork because that class made. When we look at how we do our staffing, if, if there aren't enough kids who sign up, then the class doesn't make and that opportunity goes away. So you start looking at high schools like that. There's Adly Stevenson is a high school in the country that has so many tours from administrators around the country that it's become almost like a tourist attraction. They, they booked their tours a year in advance just to be able to get in and to see what they're doing. And they are achieving exceptional performance on, their students are achieving exceptional academic performance. Here in the valley, there are other high schools that are being constructed with a completely different model. They have classroom walls that can be reconfigured within minutes. They have chairs that are all on wheels that can be reconfigured in seconds. They have different pods or hubs based on different themes, like an engineering pod or an arts pod. And each pod is completely almost self-contained where you have all your, your four core areas of math, science, social studies, and language arts for just that pod. And it's kind of like colleges and a university where they have areas of specialty and students get their entire high school experience in a, in an engineering theme or in an arts theme or in a, in some mathematics or academic themes. So when you start seeing where other high schools are doing, we're, we're falling behind. Other, other institutions are looking much more creatively at their, at their solutions. And they're actually building their new high schools around these new concepts. Again, if we do our research first and we come to the conclusion that those are not successful programs and the best opportunity our students have is what we're currently doing, then we'll stick with what we're currently doing. But right now, we don't even know if what we're doing is right because we haven't done that extensive research.
My question was similar to Ms. Tanner's as far as just kind of getting an idea of what this might look like. Are you saying that this is really just starting some research, just broad research in general to see if what we're doing is, is the best model? Or is there something you've been talking to our current high school administration and staff about that you actually do have some specific ideas that you're looking into that you, you'd want to share?
That's a great question. I do not have a model in my head. It is very tempting to start saying, I would like to see A, B, C, D, and E based on what I have seen out there. But I would be premature in suggesting that just because I saw somebody else doing it, that it's the right thing to do for our community. Some communities are better suited for certain systems than other, than other communities might be. So if they're doing something extraordinary in Nebraska, that might not fit in surprise. So that research phase is going to be critical. And that's why we're taking so much time in developing an understanding of what's out there. And then coming back and identifying, is that something that would improve our student experience in DICERt? I had the opportunity, fortunately, before all the COVID-19 hit, I was at a conference in San Diego, same time as the cheer conference in LA or the cheer competition. And I went to a session and there was a teacher who was presenting. Their district gave her a full year sabbatical to go out and research all the systems in the country. And she developed an entire portfolio of research. I don't, to be honest, I think we should just call her over and pay her to fly out here and tell us everything she learned. We could probably save a lot of flight miles, but that's the kind of, before that district did anything, that's how serious they took this research part is they wanted to know what's out there. First, they gathered all the information, brought it back to her high school. And then that, that session that I attended was them sharing all the new systems that they adopted based on the research that they gathered. I'll share that we started our process six, eight months ago. And it was great to be able to go to that breakout session to hear how they approached the same thing that we're trying to do.
Well, Dr. Kellis, with regards to, I'm just picking the one in Nebraska. How, did you happen to ask how they measured the student's mastery of a particular subject?
Well, interestingly, that was probably 15 years ago, but they were looking at that creative thing. I would love to go back today and see, okay, you were thinking so out of the box 15 years ago. What has changed or what have you adapted to over the, over time? I think it'd be sad if they went back to their very traditional model. I guess maybe that would be an indication in and of itself that maybe what we're doing is the right thing. But we did not ask how they measured. I'm just thinking back in the memory of 15 years. But I do remember that there was so much individualized attention on, on the student experience as far as individual needs. Where teachers had, just like at college, teachers had office hours and students would schedule appointments with their teachers during the school day to go in and meet with them in their office. There were students who had open periods in their schedule. And every student had an, had a laptop. And in the, the commons area, you might see 30 kids who were working on assignments. And then over here, a counselor was having a small group. And over here, a teacher was having a, a lab with a certain number of kids. So as far as success, I don't know how they measured the success of it. But I would know that we would need to answer that question because that's what we're after. Our, our objective is to raise the bar in academic performance. And be the district of choice or be the, the high school of choice, destination of high schools.
Just random question since we're on changes with high schools. I think this would be okay to ask. You've mentioned just as far as hearing things out in the community. What's the status of, are we doing any changes with start times or anything next year with our high schools? That's something that's kind of floating out there.
So the question is, are we, are we doing anything with start times of high schools? We as a district are not. There may be a high school here or there that might be looking at their, their bell schedules. That is not part of this conversation that, that we're having as far as the revisioning of the high school experience. I think there might be a high school here or there that is looking at bringing back the, the extended opportunity period for interventions. Again, that is not part of what we're talking about here. Those are just some short-term, slight, specific things that some high schools might be looking at. I think Valley Vista, for example, might be looking at something with their schedule. I don't know specifically what they're doing.
Okay, but in general, if there was going to be a change, not just for Valley Vista, for any of our high schools as far as start times for the day. I'm just thinking as we're approaching April, I'd want to make sure families had opportunity to prepare for that as far as if the start time changed. As far as changing the high school structure, that's why I asked it tonight because I didn't know if that was part of it. Not necessarily high school specific, but if there's going to be a district-wide move towards changing that, I'd want to make sure we were letting community members know. But you're saying that's not the case. If anything, it would just be tweaks to their formatting within their typical 7:15 to 2:15 day.
That's my understanding.
Yes, that is correct. There, there are no plans to change the high school start or end times for next year. Dr. Kellis stated, you know, a high school may tweak their, their bell schedule a bit, but it's going to be 7:15 to 2:15.
Yeah, I think when people are hearing bell schedule, they're thinking like first bell, meaning the time of the day could change. And so just to let you all know that that's something I've heard, not just from one high school, but from a couple. But just to give you a heads up that we might want to lose some more control on that if we talk about changing high schools.
Thank you for that. That's very important and we'll put Renee on it.
Any other questions? Dawn, now's your chance. You could mime something. All right. All right, anything else? Any other topics? Anything else? Jen Tanner? The newlyweds make it home? Just checking. All right. I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the meeting. No motion. Let's go ahead and just adjourn it.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye. Thank you.